We call this meeting to order. We're ready to do the council meeting. Please stand for select the leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bart, can you call the roll, please?
Lanyon.
The President.
Pratt.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Ben Osberg.
Here.
Ryan. Gilroy. Hanson.
President.
Can I have a motion to excuse the absent members?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. All right, um, can we get a, uh, we have the agenda presented before us. Are there any issues with the agenda? Any changes need to get made?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as the committee.
Thank you.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. All right, now, one of the fun things we get to do on council is to provide recognition for special citizens of our fair city. Um, we have Marlo Hart. I said that correctly?
Excellent.
Uh, I'm gonna read this proclamation and then I'll come present it to you. City of Williamson proudly presents, uh, for Marlo Hart, who was born May 3rd, 1924, at home on Rowley Road in Williamson, and she will be 100 years old on May 3rd, 2024. Whereas, she was married in 1946 for 46 years until her husband's passing in 1982. She raised five children who all graduated from Williamson schools. And whereas, Marlo worked for the Michigan State Police for 30 years, and upon retirement, she began working for Williamson Schools as a bus driver, and said it was her favorite job. Whereas, she is at, very active in her Williamson Lakes community where she plays cards and participates in the monthly ladies potluck. Marlo is an active member of the Williamson Area Senior Center where she participates in many of the activities and plays UCA regularly. And whereas, she has lived during the most eventful century of this world's history, and she has earned the respect and affection of people from all walks of life and ages. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Williamson wishes Marlo Hart all the best on her momentous day. We hope her special day is filled with love and laughter, and that her 100th birthday is as amazing as Ms. Hart. We express our honor and pleasure to extend this City Council proclamation on this day, 13th of May, 2024, to Marlo Hart on the occasion of her 100th birthday. Sincere congratulations and best wishes on her special day and every day after. Will you all please thank, uh, rise and join me in thanking Marlo? And appreciate it.
Was she gonna say anything? Am I supposed to say something?
Can she say something?
Yes, oh absolutely.
No, this is just, this is an honor. I've lived in, like you said, I've lived in Williamson all my life, and I wouldn't live anyplace else. So that's great. Thank you for this honor. I appreciate it.
Of course, we love having you here. All right, you want to make your comments before the council? Please state your, yeah, you can just stand up. Please say your name and your address.
Uh, Barb Davidson, I'm the Director of the Inham County 911 Center.
Oh, perfect.
I can give you my address.
Oh, you're welcome.
Not anymore. Um, I'm here tonight to just, um, we're going around to all of the city and townships in Inham County to let you know about a change.
Okay.
And ask for your help. So, Inham County is changing from our mass notification system of Everbridge to Rave. Just briefly about it, Rave is, uh, a product, we're pretty happy with it. The purchase of the product came from some of the lessons we unfortunately learned back in February of '23 during the industry shooting. Uh, we brought multiple products, um, but the one that I'd like to talk to you about today is some of the free products that will help boost the audience for some of the opt-in messaging we can do with this platform now. The product is called Smart 911. It's free. It's something we've had before and had the capability, but we can interact with it now in a way much more robustly than we could before. Um, we had not great participation, so that's part of the reason why I'm here. So, Smart 911, again, it's free, the only thing you have to have is your, um, email address to be able to make a Smart 911 profile. But if you so choose, you can share more information with us. And by us, I mean 911, and then of course, the chief and all the other first responders in this area. Whatever you would like, you can tell me. I have my own Smart 911 profile, my daughter has asthma, that's something that I want first responders to know before they come to my house. Part of the reason why we also really like it is because every six months, it gives you a little nudge to take a look at it again and make sure that the data is still good and that we are, we're doing the right things for you. The product also has the business side of the house, which is called Rave Facility. It is also free, so you can, for your businesses as well. Give us information about contact people, or put a contact in an emergency, building floor plans, all of that stuff. Like I say, we didn't have awesome participation, but we would love to have better. So I have a ton of flyers that I'm gonna leave with the chief. You are a QR code on it. The platform is open right now. We certainly do talk a lot about preparedness and emergencies. We will transition off of Everbridge fully onto Rave on June 1st, but the website is live, so you have an opportunity to log in now if you'd like to take a look. There are opt-ins, community events, um, traffic notifications, those kind of things. It doesn't always have to be the horrible stuff, it's, it's good stuff, too. So, I'm gonna leave it here, chief.
Sounds good. Is there an app? Yeah.
There's an app.
I will say that, uh, Inham County, they have that, they've had that for a while. When I lived there, we signed up for it and it's great. Um, you know, my, uh, daughter has seizures, uh, and so we put that in there, we have an excessive amount of dogs, so we were able to put that in there so that they're not, like, shocked by, or if it falls coming at them. So, you know, that is awesome, and then the traffic was great because it would let you know, hey, there's an accident on, uh, 69 up there, so probably try to avoid that. Can businesses put in, like, hazardous material locations in their buildings?
Absolutely. You can also do it for somebody. My mom's 80 and not very tech savvy, so I built her Smart 911 profile for her, um, and you just check the box saying that you did it for them, so that you can just help keep your own, my mother, um, also travels quite a bit, and Smart 911 profile will travel with you. So it's tied to your cell phone number, so if you're not even just in Michigan, this is something that will present in a 911 center and give them that information regardless if you are in Inham County or not.
Tell me you're a great idea.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, is there anyone else? Chief, is she cleaning that chair?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
Jim Carter.
Say your name.
Good to see everybody. 2/25 South Putnam, first of all, happy 100th birthday.
Thank you.
I pray in half the whole city commission, the planning commission and the city council meetings to voice my concerns and objections to $2 store proposals for the city. Just so you know, I have notes written down, I think we've had some. Want to make sure that what I communicate is accurately reflected, so I'll have this after, after the meeting, I can hand that over. Um, during that time, we, our community, heard your appreciation for our presentation and our participation and our input, and I believe we've taken this to heart. Um, regardless, as of the last planning commission meeting, both of these proposals have been approved. One, without the final public review, which I requested at one of the meetings. It's clear to me that neither of these businesses meet the intent of the 2015 master, city master plan, specifically the goals, policies, and actions called out in the, uh, executive summary, which I'll read again. While there are specific, several specific actions, items listed in the goals, policies, and actions section of the master plan, two are important enough to mention in this executive summary. The first priority is the improvement of the entryway to the city, particularly the entry from the south at the I-96 interchange, but also including the east and west entries of the city on Grand River Avenue, as well as from the north. Making a specific positive statement as people enter the community and receive their first impressions is critical to expressing and preserving the charm of Williamson. I don't believe that Dollar's General or Dollar Tree, the brands themselves, meet this specific call-out in the city, in the master plan. The business model for these stores creates parasites for communities across the country, not adding value to our existing community and businesses. In addition, there are $19 general stores within a 15-mile radius of our city. The closest, they're each about six miles away. So what's the need? Do we really need two more? And what is the value they bring to the city? Unfortunately, our concerns have not been acted on, as both of these proposals has been approved by the planning commission. So now I turn to you all, the city council. My ask for you tonight is to declare moratorium on these developments until after the development and implementation of the new city master plan. You've asked for our input, both ongoing and in the development of this plan, so please wait for, wait for that input. Are there ways to make small box stores and businesses better, a better fit for Williamson that do create value for our downtown, our citizens, and those who visit? These can all be answered in the process, if you let it work. I trust you take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, anyone else like to make comments before we move on? Nope? All right, um, next we have approval of the council meeting minutes of April 22nd, 2024. Are there any changes or corrections in the minutes? None, then I expect that motion.
Move to approve. About April 22nd.
We have a motion, a second. Bart, can you call the roll, please?
Yeah. Ben Osberg.
Yeah.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
All right, motion is approved. Um, since I'm sitting in the hot seat today, Terry got a chance to review the accounts payable, so can you go over accounts payable for us?
Everything looks good. Um, I do want to say that when, is it Jack Smith is the guy, he's the lord of the trees? When Jack Smith talked about this idea of having trees out in the, the pump areas out there, and then we could plant them as transplant them as necessary, I thought, well, that's nice, you know, but, but then I saw in this thing right here, that we put a beech tree, I think it was, at the kayak landing down here, and it cost $900. So I think this idea, I'm, I'm very much in favor of this idea of having trees out of the pump area out there. Other than that, the, um, accounts payable is up to speed.
Do you have a motion for us?
I have a motion. Move to approve checks 77515 through 77554, and ACH 864 through 890, and EFT 891, for a total of $343,252.62. Support.
All right, we have a motion to support. Do we have any discussion before we call the roll? None? Bart, can you call the roll, please?
Lanyon.
Yeah.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Ben Osberg.
Yeah.
All right, motion passes. Uh, under our action items, we have one action item before us today. Uh, we have an opening on the DDA. We have a application from Kyle Walsh to join the DDA, uh, that has been, it's in our packet. Do we have any questions?
Is Mr. Walsh here? I've moved that we, um, support and place Mr. Walsh on the DDA commission.
Second. Uh, can we, can I get a friendly amendment saying that you, your motion is to approve the, uh, application?
Yes. That was my intent.
For a term to expire.
Okay, let me see the term.
6/30/27.
So appointment to, for term to expire 6/30/27.
Does your second, uh, follow the friendly amendments?
It follows the friendly amendment.
All right, thank you. Bart, can I have a roll call, please?
Lanyon.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Ben Osberg.
Yes.
All right, motion is approved. All right, now we're moving on to our discussion items. Our first item up is 2024-2025 fiscal year budget work session. Mr. Pratt, if you could grab some of, some of all the lights. There we go, perfect. So, so this water and wastewater, which are the funds that we didn't get to the last time, um, I promised not to finish you off by PowerPoint, so I'm dialing. Um, so, same format, and again, we're talking about water and wastewater, uh, today. Um, we talked about all these other component funds, general fund, maybe your local equipment fund, et cetera, the last time we were together. Um, our budgetary themes, continued investment in our supply and equipment, repair, replacement of wastewater treatment plant and the water plant well system. And then our, our large impactful projects for the 24-25 fiscal year are the Alley Water Main, which is the water main just to our west, right as you walk out the back door, and then the Cedar Water Main, which actually Cedar Street, which that ends here and the water main crosses over. And those are part of the $3 million grant that the city received in the, in the last year. Again, there they are again, those two major projects. So we'll talk about the sewer fund, um, on the revenue side, uh, there's no proposed rate increase this time. We were able to decrease administration costs equal to 2% of revenue. Sewer and water are both rated around a million bucks and change. And so with some staffing changes, primarily with the, the GIS and the city engineer, those positions, um, not filling those positions in their, in their form, we're able to reduce the admin costs in water and wastewater by 2%, which equals about $20,000. Uh, we do have plan improvements that are necessary in the immediate future, and that's in the next, you know, really the zero to five-year term for sewer fund. So we did do, have a rate recommendations, um, rate study a couple of years ago, and just to kind of go back over that, the recommendation had us going from 50, roughly $50.90 for a typical homeowner who uses about 4,500 gallons of water, to a rate increase would, would equal about 12%. And, you know, we all agreed at the time of, that from an accounting model, that that probably, um, would make the most sense to really generate a lot of revenue in a hurry and tackle a lot of those large projects, but as far as fairness to our rate payers, we, we all agreed that that was not in our best interest. So that's why there's the big, big red line through that. Um, the rate study has some validity, um, as far as long-term, but with some tighter management, and some, really taking a look at some, some projects differently, we should be able to really not go through that rate shock that we've had. Yes?
I just want to, uh, comment, as may remember, last year when we had the rate increase, I voted no against that. One of the things that I hear back then, or heard back then, and hear now, is how much it costs us for water, sewer, sewer, and I want to commend again, uh, the city manager, John Hanifin, and the staff to look at things in a different way and to see if we can find alternatives, so that we feel that we're getting the best bang for the dollar. And again, I know I said this a lot of times up here since I've been on the council, but very appreciative of John, what, what you're doing in this regard.
Thank you, I appreciate that, it's a group effort, as we all know. As far as, as major expenditures, lift stations, Mechanic Street and Zimmer, uh, they're, they've been in, in, in business for, for quite some time. Mechanic Street's in a lot better shape than Zimmer. Mechanic also serves a lot more, uh, customers than the Zimmer relative station. And we did go through a bid process for those, and, and the bids were so out of line that, that we threw them out, and then we're just looking at alternatives for possibly doing some of the work overtime. They're operating, they're not, they're not great, but they're, they're lift stations, and they're not, they're, it's not well water, it's, it's the other stuff. So, um, they're not leaking, there, there's some, some things that we've done internally, there's some small projects that we've been able to accomplish without, uh, having to do complete rebuilds. At the plant, the wastewater plant, the, the primary budget concern is, is replacing the UV bank, and that's the ultraviolet, it's part of the main treatment train, and that's anywhere from $750,000 to a million bucks. Um, there's a, there's a number of different state programs that are available, mainly it's through the SRF, which is a state revolving fund. The bad news for us is that we're not in the entitlement community, which means that we're doing well, so we don't score in that regard, because our average median income is, is above, um, the norm. And then also, we have good operators and we don't pollute the river. And so, it's kind of, you know, when you look at it from that perspective, we're doing things right, and so we don't have access to the SRF program, which is a combination of grants, and usually you have to be an entitlement community, which means financially distressed to qualify those, or you have to have significant environmental issues, and we don't have those. So, we're, we're looking at that as a possible 2025 project, and by that, I mean 25-26 fiscal year, we don't plan on doing the UV, but we have to go through, um, we are gonna diligently pursue, you know, grant funding, much like we received the $3 million federal allocation. I did submit this time around for wastewater improvements, and, and we'll see what we get. That program obviously has become more competitive, uh, this is a, you know, a national election year, uh, and, and frankly, a lot depends on who represents you and which team they're on, and how competitive their race is. The other thing is those, those grants are now limited to about a million dollars, where in the past, they were somewhat uncapped. You know, kind of the common term for that is a pork barrel project, but, you know, hey, we, we were beneficiary one time around, so we're, we're to try again, but, um, some of the other things, the sludge hauling costs are, are, you know, those are always a concern because of legislative changes, chemical costs, those are, those are normalizing a little bit after the supply ish, supply chain issues from, from COVID. And then we have continued investment, um, for things, we clean our tanks, and the SCADA is actually the, I forget what the acronym punches out to, but it's our, it's our digital monitoring of the wastewater system. If there's an issue at a lift station or at the plant, then we're able to look on the computer first and then, you know, dispatch the work accordingly. So, from a fund analysis standpoint, um, we are required to generate about $80,000 to meet our USDA repair replacement and infrastructure obligations, or we have to designate certain expenses to come out of the RRI cash balance, which we've done in the past, and our, our RRI balance is projected to be right around $180,000 at the, at the end of this year. And that's even with a lot of significant projects, um, North Putnam, and then Lloyd and Williams are, those are funded through the, the $3 million grant, so that's independent of that. So that's the sewer fund, we'll, we'll go to the numbers in a second. Any questions about that?
Comment?
Yeah.
I took a tour of the wastewater treatment plant and, um, was impressed with the professionalism of the people that run the place, but the guy that runs the place, the head guy, told me that the, the, so the overarching consideration is that everything that flows into the wastewater treatment plant is trying to destroy the plant. It's all toxic, it's all chemically reactive, it's all awful stuff. Um, so when we spend a lot of money on that, it's, it's just, we have to, there's no way around it. Don't like it. So this $100,000 we've got on the side right now, saved up right now, but we have a million-dollar project in front of us, so, but there's, there's a difference of over 10 there.
Right. Right, that's the conundrum, right? When you have, when you have, there's elements in that plant that are, that are older than, than, than all of us in the room, now that, now that Ms. Hart has left, I mean, there's, there's really the things that are upwards of 70, 80 years on that plant.
Yeah, it's one thing to make this comment, I was on the council before, when we, we had to face the difficult situation of, uh, council from the past not doing what they needed to do, they weren't paying, they're paying an interest subsidy on loan, and then the loan came due, and I was on the council, we had to step up and raise the rates, 7%, a couple, three times. You know, I'm not a fan of pushing our problems on to, uh, to future, to the future. So when, when a firm, the quality of trace act, sort of says we need to raise, you hate that pretty seriously.
So moving to water, again, same, same scenario, uh, about a million dollar, uh, in, in total, uh, in the fund, a year over year, and we did reduce administration costs, so that, that added about $20,000 of digital revenue. Um, we, we do make a, kind of a modest assumption of two new residential connections per year, and then we've been able to bring that, at least the, the couple of years that I've been here. Again, rate study, not as drastic increase, but, but still pretty, pretty high. The water fund is, the plant's newer, I mean, the, you know, some folks, you know, here 15, 16 years ago, made an investment in the plant, and our water plant is essentially new, um, and we've been working on, and, and folks have been feeling the construction pain of it with Putnam and Williams and Lloyd, we've been working on the distribution system, because that's one of the, the limiting factors that we have in our water system. We do a great job at the plant, but we're limited by what we have in the brown, and so we're moving through town, replacing the four-inch water mains with eight-inch, so folks will see increased pressure, um, and also those older, um, some of them are, are ductile iron pipes are, will be replaced, so. Lead and copper, I mean, those are, there's very strict regulations from the state of Michigan for that, and we're required to do investigations on all our, our leads, and we've, we're through, it's more than 90%, um, which makes us well in compliance, and still have a handful of investigations left to, to finish. As far as, uh, the plant and the wells, I mean, there, there's ongoing maintenance with wells, and, you know, not as caustic as the, uh, the, the stuff that goes in the wastewater plant, but when you're pulling water from the ground, um, you know, there's iron, there's scale, there's things like that, so that's a, it's a constant maintenance and repair, and I think we do a good job of that. With our fund analysis, um, again, less, um, less overall amount of our RRI needed because we have a smaller bond for the, for the improvements that we did, and our, our RRI balance is projected to be right around $220,000 by the end of this year. Um, and again, the good news is, you know, we, we, we were able to establish a lab with Putnam and Williams and Lloyd, as those are some of the oldest sections of water main in town. And then the, the projects referenced at the beginning, with, um, the Cedar Street crossing, the downtown alley, those are two other sections that are, that are pretty, pretty ancient. So, as I said, we did get the $3 million award, uh, it's a drawdown account, so we have to do the projects, and then, then we're reimbursed. And one of the things that, um, you know, because they're reimbursed, it's a nice problem to have, but I've been talking with the treasurer about, you know, the Red, the Cedar Street and the downtown alley, about moving those to next spring, um, just from the cash flow basis, um, because it is a draw account, and we did take a pretty, you know, the, the Putnam Street project was, was not, was not cheap. So, we want to make sure that we're in a strong cash position, cash position, um, as money comes in and money gets out for those projects. Any questions about the water fund? So, next step wise, I mean, you know, again, council has a chance to independently review, have any other additional questions that we have. We will hold our public hearings for rates and for budgets and millage on the 28th, that is a Tuesday, want to point that out, um, we don't meet on, uh, Memorial Day, we don't meet on Lee Ray Day either, almost on that, but, um, so we'll be here on Tuesday, um, the 28th, and then the budget will be adopted on June 10th. I can just click over. Last PowerPoints, Mr. Hanson, I promise. So, one thing I want to point out, um, this is the wastewater fund, and this is right at the very bottom, so with the plants and everything, this is about a $6 million fund, um, and it's, you know, it's depreciating over time as the assets get older. This will show when, when, you know, negative fund balance for the, the given fiscal year that we're in, but the delta there is the depreciation number, and you can see that, how that tracks over time. We're not, we're not, you know, $333,000 in, in, you know, arrears in the wastewater fund, um, on a cash basis, we're, we're, you know, above water, and that's where the RRI thing looks like. Please scroll up. Just to revenue. So revenue is right around, just under $1.1 million. It's pretty, pretty consistent, 2022, 23 is a little bit higher, um, you know, folks are, are just using a little bit less water, so, um, there's no other way to, to put it than, other than that. And, uh, the primary source is ready to serve when they come out of, come out of the charge, and that gives us about a million bucks. So that's wastewater. Click over to water. Same story, um, reflective of negative balance, this is negative in the current fiscal year that we're in, but again, that's the money in, money out for the grant funds that we receive and do projects, and then we started to, to pay bills in the, this is the, the current fiscal year, this column. So, fund overall is right around $3.2 million, um, that includes the plant and all the assets. Depreciation number here, uh, brings this overall number down. Scroll up here.
So, wouldn't it be safe to say that big picture wise, the water is $3 million, but the wastewater is $6 million?
Correct, on overall fund balance, that's correct, yeah, yeah. Again, rate, rate about, uh, a million bucks for, um, the water fund. Again, the primary source ready to serve charge, and then they come out of the charge. Those are those funds, we don't, other than the, uh, the planned improvements, um, we don't expect anything other than, you know, the normal, uh, activities that we would undertake for water and wastewater. That's all I have, unless there's questions. Any questions before we move on? Just for the public, all this has been on, the, the draft budget was, was presented to council, um, over a over a month ago in April, and it's been online for that long, and folks are always welcome to come in if they want a paper copy. We can get them all.
Please just turn the big button. There you go. Thank you. All right. Well, there are questions. We'll move on from our budget work session, and we'll move on to our next item, which is our construction project update. Let's see, we have Phil here, and then you have?
I'll just go brief, and then Phil can fill in any gaps if we have them. We'll start with Lloyd Street. The water main is half in, half in, which is good. Once that's fully in, then we'll start on services and doing those tie-ins. So that project's moving along as planned. Williams Street, all of the services are in now.
There might be a couple stragglers on the west end, but then like just three or four. Everything else is in.
The water main is in, and they're starting to work on sidewalks and curbs and approaches on Williams. And in Putnam, where we were, the contractor, KNR, was working on curb ramps today, which is good. There were a couple of drive approaches that had to be redone based on some slopes. There was also, we were pretending smiling because the music's caught up in that wash, so we apologize for that. Again, that's at no cost to the project. That's the contractor's very responsibility for that. So there's some sidewalks that are being redone, but that will not keep us from paving later this week, which is a good sign. So we're right on schedule with that, and hopeful to close that project out the next couple of weeks. After the paving's done, there is the striping that will go on, stop bars and things like that. And then there's the backup curb stuff, which is, you know, kind of the final landscape restoration. Do you think, do you think we will plant trees this spring? Do you think it's early enough, or do you think we'll wait till the fall to do that?
They're going to be real close to the season deadline, so we'll have to see where they're at. If it's going to fall outside of May, we're probably better off to wait.
Yeah, it's ideal when you're doing, planting trees on the street in the heat, because the heat envelope from the road, especially from New Ashville, it's ideal to do that in the fall. And that's just, that's just the industry standard. So in the event we end up doing that, we'll notify everybody, because Jack Smith will levitate over here if the trees aren't planted. In a good way. Glad he's not at force.
Our lower trees.
How soon, how soon can school traffic get through there?
So it'll, again, project will have to be opening soon. Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna say the original deadline of Memorial Weekend, so two weeks.
Any other questions? Nope. Do you have anything you want to add on?
Covered it very well.
The only thing I'll add on is that the crews have been great. Once again, they're very efficient, they're getting things done, you know, communicating with us when we're not going to be allowed to be there, so they've been awesome. You know, for our public viewing audience and those here, I would strongly encourage that we listen to road closed signs and not blow down Putnam. You know, I was watching them on Friday, and various times where people continue to blow through even though they were doing construction, and almost hit a couple of workers. So I would like that to not be an incident. I'd like Putnam to get done without any incidents. So I would strongly ask that everybody please be patient. We're almost done, and that everyone can go through, hopefully get the speed limit. With that, we have our master plan update?
Yeah, so thank you. We had our kickoff meeting, just a brief one at our last planning commission meeting. And really, the focus over the summer months is going to be the public participation in that. Planning Commission will meet again in June, to get a little bit better idea of what that would look like. And then, again, expected to be about a ten to twelve-month process. So just to read, again, this information's online, but kind of the major bullet points moving through the months here is kickoff and strategic issues, which we talked about at May, ways from today, which is the evaluation of where we're at, then the public participation side over the next ninety days or a hundred and twenty days. And again, that's not exclusive. It's not, it's not like you have a tax filing deadline. It's, we want folks to continue to participate throughout. We'll work on our goals and objectives, and then planning for tomorrow, and implementing the plan, and adoption. And one of the key, you know, critical things that we have to ensure is that there's a connect between the master plan and the zoning ordinance, because the master plan is aspirational, and the zoning ordinance is legislative. So the zoning ordinance dictates what can be built, what it looks like, how tall, setbacks, things like that. So we want to make sure that we're getting the, those things are connected as we move through this process.
Yeah, I wanted to ask, the gentleman brought up, he read from the current one, and suggested that the dollar stores don't represent that master plan. Is that an issue that's, are we in a situation where it's like a matter of opinion interpretation from the master plan, or is it supposed to be more like, you know for sure, everything is supposed to be?
Well, I mean, in a perfect world, the zoning ordinance would perfectly match to the desires outcome of the master plan. And I'll say, I don't mind saying this, and I'll take ownership of it because I'm here now, but I wasn't here in 2015, and there is somewhat of a disconnect, and it's maybe over, over aspirational, if you will.
Sure.
Or, or, or under legislative, as far as the zoning ordinance. Doesn't mean it's wrong. It could mean that folks have different viewpoints about it.
But it sounded like what he read. I mean, I agree with his interpretation, but I can see where someone else might not agree with it.
So the master plan, though, isn't a legal document to base decisions off of. It's an aspirational document, but you want it to look like. So it can say what it wants to, but you're not basing decisions on the planning commission on, you have to, you're basing the decision on planning commission on the ordinances.
And the piece we're talking about has to do with the vision, the perceived vision. That one's very subjective. So I think if we tried to force hands or force decisions based on our opinion of a vision, that's open ourselves up to some big problems.
So the master plan thing that the planning commission is doing right now, is this the thing that makes the translation from the aspirational to the legislative?
So the master plan would be like the, when we had done what we want the city to look like, and then we would have to take, as council, we would have to take the inspiration from that and make sure our zoning and our ordinances match that, so that they say the same things.
But there's a conundrums, you know, somebody comes in and meets that, or that, all of those, you know, step forth guidelines, then there's nothing to do about.
Yeah, so that would be our task once the master plan is done, is to...
That's after the master plan.
Is to read what our, the interpretation of the master plan is and make changes.
So those are actually zoning ordinances that we'll pass?
That we would have to address.
Okay, so Planning Commission will draft them, and then we approve them, or how does that work?
Council approves the final.
Yep.
The final planning?
And the zoning.
Zoning ordinances are done by us?
That's right.
Okay. And when do you think those might come around, from this version of the master plan?
Yeah, so that's usually, it's a ten to twelve-month process.
For the master plan.
Master plan.
Okay, so how many, ten to twelve, then the zoning ordinances?
The zoning ordinance would, it's really at a point of, you know, my opinion, it's just, there's, there's a couple of key sections that need some reworking. I mean, I don't think we need to completely redo our residential zoning, for example. But I think it's really the primaries, the ways to run corridor, the hundred and twenty-four acres out by the highway, the, all things that we talked about in our joint session in September, and then, and then the industrial part.
Yeah, so on the master plan, I agree with what's been said by a couple individuals, pretty clear to me what those that put together the master plan back in 2015 wanted. And they didn't want what's going out there presently, the way I read it. To me, again, it's pretty clear. So if we're saying that the master plan is aspirational, where did we fall down to be able to say, it's real clear in the master plan, so here's what we have to put in the planning rules and regulations to ensure that the master plan lives by what appears like everybody wants it to be. So where did we fall down, so we don't fall down again as it relates to that?
I think the, saying it's falling down, I think that we could probably stay here well past midnight debating about, you know, how that happened or why it happened. But I think the important thing that we got to keep underscoring is, and, you know, there's certain corporate stores or corporate flags that folks don't like or never going to like, and your plan, flanked by attorneys, but your plan can't contemplate that. And if you wanted to, in your zoning, and I'll use housing as an example, and I'll report at the school housing meeting under my report, but there's a lot of talk about accessory dwelling units, for example. And if a community wanted accessory dwelling units and thought that would be a good idea in their master plan, but yet didn't incorporate it into the zoning ordinance, then you can't have accessory dwelling units. And the flip side is, if you don't want accessory dwelling units, and you don't think those are a good idea, and you think they're detrimental to neighborhoods, and, you know, you don't want, you know, your kids coming back to live with you, then you would remove accessory dwelling units in your zoning ordinance. Where it gets a little more complicated is when you're trying to pick, like, especially in the commercial zoning, you can't say, well, we've got enough pharmacies, we don't want any more pharmacies. You can't do that. You can, you can limit the size of a particular store, or you can talk about the, you know, the overall footprint can't be more than four thousand feet or six thousand feet. You can, you know, change parking, things like that. But you can't get into, you can even, you can give any of you, so we like restaurants, but we don't want oil changes. But you can't say, well, we like Jiffy Lube, but we don't like Quaker State. You can't, you can't do that. So that's, that's where we got to make sure there's connection, make sure that the community objectives in the master plan are then carried out on the legislative side of zoning ordinance.
Okay, the crafting of those zoning ordinances will be, again, that's the planning commission, but the approval comes from us.
Correct, but council is also part of the process. I mean, your, the expectation isn't, frankly, I don't think that you can without us noticing there's a joint work session. The expectation is all seven of you are at every planning commission meeting, but there are times, there will be joint sessions, much like we have, was it September twenty-ninth of 2023, when we talked just on, you know, on a high level about like, you know, where are we at with residential zoning and some of the kind of the major blocks that are playing in town.
All right. The main force safety improvements?
Yeah, I don't have a lot to report, other than, you know, I've had several discussions with Spicer and with Mr. Wes Moreland about what that might look like. He's done some concept sketches. I don't know if that's anything that we're running to share, because they're not scaled out yet, but we're going to continue to work on that. Obviously, at some point, we'll have that for council to view, and then at the same time, we'll have to share those with MDOT, because, you know, M forty-three Grand River is still a state highway.
All right. We didn't receive any correspondence, correct?
Correct.
All right. So then department reports.
So I attended the, the school's task force on housing last Thursday, and it was interesting. I was there on behalf of the city. There were spokes from Williams Town Township, and also one rep from Locke. The school task group did bring in, I think she's the executive director of the Home Builders Association, and she had, she had some, some, some good insight into some regional things as far as development. There were some inaccuracies, specifically about Williamston, about large pieces of property and what they have or don't have utilities, also about where our fees follow with the overall scheme of things. I think partly she was reporting, and they did some sort of unscientific study of area builders in Williamson, but it was a good discussion. The group agreed to meet, I think, either August or October. The school's trying to figure out the right, right date for that. So there was somebody there from Mishna, who was, who was talking about a new state program for housing grants, and, you know, kind of got everybody fired up when it was that there's sixty million dollars available. But having, you know, tracked that legislation, and I guess tracked that funding program, there's sixty million statewide, there's three million available for Ingham County, and so for Williamson or Williamstown or Locke to seek out those type of grant funds, you're competing with Lansing and East Lansing, Delhi, Delta Township, and some of the areas. And again, back to the low to mod communities are going to score higher. And you're also, there's a cap on how much funding you can receive. So even if we were the only one to receive a grant, we could build twenty housing units. And they're not, it's not, it's a hundred thousand per unit, you know, total two million dollars allocated, that's the max anyone community can get. And you can build any type of housing. It's not, it's not, you know, workforce or affordable housing.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right, chief?
The police, April police report was report attached to the packet of the gas, so the statistics speak for themselves for April of 2024. The department highlights, of course, I completed the monthly use of force report, but National Night Out planning continues. It's August sixth, that first Tuesday in August. It's going to be bigger and better than ever, so that work continues. Our officers are continuing to now go to spring sports, track, softball, baseball, track meets and stuff, so they, they're getting out of the community for that. A new reserve officer was recently appointed, and we anticipate actually another reserve officer being appointed this week, after they pass the necessary last steps. So that's all I would have. Any questions on my side?
So I want to say again, I think this is a great idea, because when you say, how is Williamson Police Department doing? It's a subjective sort of thing. Are they doing good, doing bad? Hard to say. But this is objective data that shows that the Williamson Police Department is doing what they should be doing. So this is good.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
On the subjective side, the school officer stopped by my son's class the other day, and it was like the highlight of his day. So awesome.
They do a great job.
Yep. All right. Building department, that was included in the packet. If you have questions, submit them to the city manager, and he can give you answers. We'll move on to committee subcommittee reports. Does anyone have any meetings? I would, if you heard, planning met, they approved the final site plan for Dollar General. It was contingent on the life split being approved, which the applicant has already submitted. So everything is, that's the end of planning commission's business with that Anyone else, anything else? So we'll go to our last option for audience participation, maximum five minutes presentation. Would anyone like to speak?
So I had comments prepared, and I'm going to blow it up, because I appreciate you guys and the discussion around the connection between the master plan and the zoning. I think it's more than just aspirational. I think that should really drive what's in the zoning. And if you can't do it in the zoning, then fix the master plan. Just make sure they, they match, so that you're not creating expectations for people that are going to go one way and not the other. The other thing is, is there a ton of research. There's a ton of stuff out there on zoning and how you change zonings. And I got into it. It's great to be retired sometimes, but you can get into a lot of things, and there's a lot of information out there about towns. And I thought it's interesting that if you add together Dollar Tree and Dollar General, there are more Dollar Tree and Dollar General stores than the combination of Walmart, Target, McDonald's, and Starbucks. There's a lot of them. And so communities around the country are starting to get much more strategic in how they write zoning relative to these small box stores, specifically saying, the one big thing is produce. They typically doesn't carry fresh produce, so communities are going in and saying, small box stores, which are defined either ten thousand or fifteen thousand square feet, have to have X amount of space set aside for fresh produce. They're trying to avoid some of the food islands or oases, or whatever we call those these days. So just asking not only the council, but also the planning commission, that we're doing everything we can to protect what I feel is a pretty unique situation we have here in Williamson. It, we are one of the last remaining small towns that is really thriving, I think, in the greater Lansing area. You have to go to Chelsea, you have to go to Brighton, you have to go to those towns where the smaller communities are really, they have that downtown and that central area where people can go and congregate. So having the right ordinances in place that can connect the vision to where you guys want to take it, you people want to take it, and where the citizens want it to go, is really critical. So I encourage you to just stay on that, and I appreciate, again, you, your comments and digging into how these two connect. I really appreciate it very much. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? All right, we'll move on to council member comments.
Nothing for me, thank you.
So Paul Neal, who was a teacher at the high school, who started the figure study.
Okay.
And that figure study, he's retired now. He was track coach across country and art. And that program is continuing, and representatives, drawings from that program are on display at the middle school, gallery. at the middle school, Galway Art Williamson now, right now for the next couple of months. They were made during the figure study. And Paul himself is now, he's asked Parkinson's, but he's functioning pretty well, so he's able to come to the sessions again too, which is really cool.
What year was the project?
I don't know.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah, I'm not sure what year he retired because.
He was an awesome.
He had a long career here and his, yeah, we, we won.
He's in the Michigan sports hall, I think.
Yeah, the number of track meetings he won, oh wow. Cross country too. Even state, I don't know, cross country.
Yeah. Say his name again.
Paul Nielsen.
Paul Nielsen?
Oh yeah, go see the drawings at the middle school.
Awesome. Not much for me, just, you know, like I said earlier, please be respectful of the construction workers we have throughout the town. We're wrapping up as we heard, so everyone just please be patient. Other than that, it's supposed to be gorgeous, so let's enjoy Williamson. With that, I had, see what Apple says, 7:51, we'll call this meeting adjourned.